That's good. It's like going to the butcher. You ask for $5 and they give you $5.15. One sheet last milk. That's perfect.
Now that we're all lined up, good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the entrance. Don't let the man in the uniform scare you. I'm sure he would assist you. Once you do that, present it to the City Clerk and the speakers will be called on at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting for January 24th, 2017. Invocation tonight will be given by Pastor -- see, there's a first name here I don't know. I know him as Pastor Edgy from the Living Word Inland Empire Church. And immediately following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Brian Reynars. So if you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we just come before you today, Father. I just pray right now for the councilmen, the mayors, Father God, they just work together in a peace of mind and a peace of heart. I pray for strength, Father God, in the City of Grand Terrace, Father God. I just pray, Lord, that there be a strength among us, Father God, Lord Jesus, a unity, Father God, and a spirit of peace, Father God. I just pray for all the families that are here. I pray for strength. I pray for the wisdom and direction upon all those that are on the board, Father God. I pray to give them the wisdom to continue to guide this wonderful, great city, Father God. And we continue to ask you for favor and blessings upon all families, and we thank you for today. Let the blessing of God rest upon them. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Reynars?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protemroblis?
Present.
Mayor McInnes?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Tonight, we have two special presentations, and I'm going to start off with the second that is on your agenda tonight. And this is a presentation of a commendation to Senior Senator, immediate past President, Jane Haynes. I know her as Jane, but this says that her name is Almyra Jane Haynes. Whereas Jane Haynes, born in Garber, Oklahoma, on December 23rd, 1932, moved to Southern California in 1952 and raised her three children in nearby La Sierra, California. And whereas Jane worked in a variety of occupations in Grand Terrace and the surrounding areas from 1977 to 2000 as a telephone operator at the Loma Linda University, real estate agent at the Grand Terrace Real Estate, a photographer, manager, and owner of One Hour Photoshop in the neighboring city of Loma Linda, and as a school bus driver. And whereas Jane has lived in the city of Grand Terrace since 1982, and whereas Jane completed her Associate of Arts degree in Business Administration in 1995 from San Bernardino Valley College, and whereas Jane has remained equally as active and ambitious in her community since retiring in 2000, and whereas Jane served on the Advisory Board of Retired Seniors Volunteer Program from 2008 to 2010, and whereas Jane has volunteered for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Citizens on Patrol Program from 2009 to present, and whereas Jane served as Vice Chairperson of the Eastern Valley Regional Council on Aging from 2010 to 2016, and whereas Jane served as Vice President of the Grand Terrace Senior Center from 2010 to 2013, and then as President from 2014 to 2016, and Jane has served as the Eastern Valley Regional Counseling on Aging representative to the Senior Affairs Commission since 2014. And now therefore I, Darcy McInnes, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby thank and commend Almyra Jane Haynes for her hard work, dedication, and loyalty to the City of Grand Terrace, its citizens, and its community. And so I have a commendation for you, and I'd like for you to come up. I'll meet you at the lectern. That way you can say a few words. All right. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And we're -- I think she's going to take a picture. Okay. And so we also not only are giving you the commendations suitable for framing, but we are giving you this nice little key to the C lapel pin that you can wear with pride on all of your travels. Thank you very much for your work, and if you would please say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you each and every one. This is much appreciated. I'm one of all public servants, and I consider myself one as well. It's been a pleasure to do this work, to serve others, and I intend to continue to do so. Thank you again.
All right. Our second special presentation is the proclamation for National Mentoring Month, and my colleague will read that.
This is a presentation of a proclamation for National Mentoring Month to San Bernardino County Children and Family Services. Whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month to focus national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits can work together to increase the number of mentors to assure brighter futures for our young people. And whereas the National Mentoring Month Public Awareness Campaign, recognized by Presidential and Congressional proclamation, is led by Mentor, the National Mentoring Partnership in partnership with the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health and Highland Street Foundation. In 2017, Mentor celebrates 15 years of National Mentoring Month. And whereas on January 21st, 2013, President Barack Obama recognized January as National Mentoring Month, noting in his presidential proclamation, "Our American family is bound together by caring individuals who make it their mission to serve others. During National Mentoring Month, we pay special tribute to the men and women who enrich the lives of our young people and fortify the unbreakable bonds between one generation and the next." And whereas the third Monday in January is recognized nationally as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and brings forth an ideal opportunity to highlight the importance of mentoring by honoring mentors within our community, as well as recruiting new mentors, providing training to mentoring programs, or encouraging mentor pairs to serve together. Whereas the Mentoring Resource Coordinator and the Mentoring Task Force is designated to bring together existing mentoring programs and resources, sharing information, and facilitating mentoring relationships between youth being served by the Department of Behavioral Health, Children and Family Services, probation, and community-based mentoring programs. Now therefore be it resolved that Darcy McInnes, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of January 2017 as National Mentoring Month, and encourage organizations, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, other entities, and the citizens of San Bernardino County to engage in activities and partnerships that support mentoring with programs that promote positive outcomes such as improved self-esteem, social skills, and knowledge of career opportunities.
Okay. And we have somebody here to accept this. Wonderful. I'll meet you at the lectern. Hi. Nancy Pimentel. Nancy, very nice to meet you. And on behalf of me and the entire council, please accept this. And if you would, we'll do a photo op. Okay? Oh, yes. Thank you. And if you would say a few words?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and everyone else. On behalf of the Mentoring Task Force, I want to accept this proclamation. It means a lot to us. It is something that is going to be bringing visibility not only to this area, but along with the other mayors, bringing about the need of mentoring to our youth. As research has shown, there's a very direct correlation between having a mentor in a young person's life and having positive outcomes, whether it's helping them to graduate from high school, keeping their grades on track, furthering their education, and keeping them out of trouble, basically. It's been proven through our Department of Children and Family Services, through the data we've done researching and calling up our young people through our independent living program. When they're asked the question, "Do you have anyone else in your life, an adult, a caring adult besides your social worker, who has helped and encouraged you?", if they say no, there's a direct correlation between negative outcomes in their life where they haven't graduated, they haven't gotten a job, they haven't achieved some of these things. So with that, we are encouraging this environment and the folks that you know here in Grand Terrace to play a powerful role, whether it's you being an advocate by informing other people. One of our key partners, which is our CASA court-appointed advocates, had placed, matched up 40 foster youth in the East Valley region last year. They still have 39 foster youth that are waiting for a mentor. So if this room had 39 people and if everyone agreed to match up to a youth, we would have that job accomplished. So we have a challenge going on right now. If you went to our Facebook page, which is facebook.com/mentortrictaskforce, you will hear about a challenge with our Board of Supervisors, some other mayors, others who've made videos challenging three other people and calling them out by name to do a challenge about what mentoring means to them, who's mentored them, and the importance of mentoring another youth. We passed the challenge on. Remember the ice bucket challenge? Okay, same kind of thing, to challenge three other people to do a video and encourage them to either become a mentor or talk about what mentoring has meant to them in their lives. So I encourage you, if anyone wants to become a mentor, they can call the Children's Network, which is at area code 909-383-9677. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pimentel. I appreciate you being here tonight. We'll move on to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to remove an item? Were there any requests, Madam City Clerk, for removal?
None.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
A second. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmember Reynars, Hussey, Wilson voted aye. Mayor Protemroblis voted aye. Mayor McInnes voted aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
None.
Is anybody in the audience wanting to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing no takers, all closed, public comment, and bring this back to our council for their communications, starting with Councilmember Brian Reynars.
Thank you, Mayor. For me, January was League of California Cities Month. I have two reports from two meetings that I attended. The first one was in the evening at Pinnacle Peak in Colton. It was on the 12th of January. And besides eating some really good salmon, I listened to an analysis of Proposition 64, which is the legalization of marijuana initiative. This was given by Captain Danielle Bolt of the San Bernardino Sheriff's Office. She's in Rancho Cucamonga. She's the police chief there. What she did was actually took some people and went to Colorado communities prior to our Prop 64 being passed to see what effects the legalization of marijuana had on Colorado communities. And there's a whole list here of negative effects that they're seeing in Colorado, so I'll just kind of go through this list that she covered for us. One of them is you cannot escape the odor of marijuana. Even if it's not burning, if you're growing your six plants in your house and you have the window open, at some point neighbors are going to smell it, and it's going to generate neighbor-on-neighbor complaints. That's what they've been seeing in Colorado. And to make her point, she brought a plant in guarded by a deputy. She brought a five-foot plant to the Rancho Cucamonga City Council meeting, and she just sat it out in the lobby, and within an hour, the whole chamber smelled like pot. And that's just from a marijuana plant standing there. And it started aggravating people's allergies. People started sniffing. So she was trying to get that point across, that that is going to be a problem, and to be aware of that. Some of the other enforcement challenges is that the punishments are extremely weak now, so people are willing to either get a $100 ticket or maybe a little bit more. They're going to be willing to risk it, because that's what they've seen in Colorado, so the deterrence is gone. And it's taking a long time for people to understand the law, what the law is, what they can do, what they can't do. So what they're finding is that people are doing things that are illegal when they thought they were legal, and that's creating an enforcement challenge in Colorado. They're also seeing a large spike in people who were previously non-users, who are now becoming users. So then that kind of exacerbates all the problems that I've discussed so far. And then a legal issue is sometimes if a dog alerts on marijuana in a vehicle and it turns out to be a legal amount, and then they find during the search another drug that's not legal, there have been cases in Colorado where those have been thrown out because the initial alert was on a legal substance. So things like that are happening. The edible packaging looks a lot like candy, so it's being marketed like Snickers bars and Kit Kats, and so kids are eating it. It's in body lotions, marijuana-laced tampons. It's showing up everywhere, and people are using some of these items, not realizing that it's laced with marijuana, and they're having reactions to it. And also the THC extraction process is very volatile, so now they're seeing an increase in those butane honey oil laboratories where they're extracting THC. So there's a lot of fire issues, a lot of explosion issues. And then also they're seeing fires and issues with people trying to bypass Edison, trying to bypass the electric company so they don't have to pay the high bills for their grow operations. So then what they have is rigged up electricity, and it's causing fires. The seizure and destruction of marijuana. They stop somebody, they find a whole bunch of marijuana, the police sees it, they store it for a while, then they destroy it, and then if the defendant prevails in court, they file a claim against the police department or the city, because now their property's been destroyed and they were found not guilty for whatever reason. So then the claims are starting to increase over this. And then she also covered -- go to the next page here. The difference in prices between an alcohol breath test and a marijuana blood test. Right now, a breath test for a DUI, if someone gets stopped in Grand Terrace, it's 50 cents. The breath test costs 50 cents roughly per test. A marijuana blood test is $200 per test. So if someone takes a blood test in the course of a marijuana investigation, that cost will be $200 for test. So they're trying to work really quickly to figure out a more cost-efficient test. And then since it's still illegal federally, it's largely a cash business, because the banking system is really not involved yet in marijuana transactions. So you have dispensaries with thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, cash, and that obviously attracts crime and bad guys. And as of right now, there's no marijuana tracking analysis for the state or federal law enforcement agencies, so we really haven't caught up with the law yet. And then taxation is stimulating a black market, because Colorado's putting a tax on it. Now a black market is surfacing again, so you're almost getting the same thing as you had before, only now you have two markets, legal and illegal. And then the odor is also a problem. The captain relayed a story about a wedding gown store that was next to a dispensary that had to go out of business because all their wedding dresses smelled like pot. It just permeated through the vents, through the walls. So it's a law that's controversial, and citizens want to make sure it's regulated. It's obviously, as you'll see in my next briefing too, it's the hot issue of 2017. All right, now my second one that I went to was the League of California Cities New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy. I attended with the city manager. And just real quickly, the League of California Cities is an association of California city officials who work together to enhance their knowledge and skills, information, and combine resources so that they may influence policy decisions that affect cities. Basically, it's a group who advocates for local control of government. They try to fight against state and federal control if local control would work better. At this three-day conference, I met mayors and council members from all across the state, from towns with 400 people, and I met a councilman who won his position with 98 votes. His opposition had 97 votes. They had to do a recount. And then I met also a councilman from Alameda, which is a large city in the Bay Area. So the entire spectrum, there are about 500 people there. There were councilmen, mayors, councilwomen, city managers, anything you can imagine. We attended several presentations. I'll go over these briefly. If you want more information, you can go to cacities.org, and all of this information is on there in detail, or you can talk to me, and I have a full set of notes on it. The first one we went to was a basics boot camp, and they covered things like the roles and responsibilities of a city council, the roles and responsibilities of city manager and staff, protocols for engaging the public, and importance of engaging public outside of the meeting. And then the league talked a little bit about itself, including their 2017 goals. They have four. Number one is to increase funding for critical transportation and water infrastructure in the state. Number two is to develop realistic responses to the homeless crisis. Number three is to improve the affordability of workforce housing, secure additional funds for affordable housing. And number four is to address safety impacts.
Or recommend receiving file budget to actual report for first quarter ending September 30th, 2016, and receive Measure I revenue report on Measure I receipts for 2010 and 24 through 2040. On discussion items, we looked at administrative matters having to do with a funding request for the operation and maintenance of the San Bernardino Santa Fe Depot, and we recommended the San Bernardino County Transportation Analysis Model Contract Award to Cambridge On January 18th, we had our Grand Terrace Oversight Board, and the Oversight Board approved resolution of the Successor Agency C-RAF Loan Repayment Schedule, of the Successor Agency's residual receipt contract agreement, and the Successor Agency's Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, 1718, in the amount of $2,925,556. And that concludes my report. So we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is item number seven. This is the acceptance of the 2017 Every 15 Minutes Grant Award in the amount of $6,000. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council, and members of the public. In April, we'll be hosting the next Every 15 Minute Program, which is a collaborative effort by some of our folks at the Sheriff's Office, as well as other agencies. I'm going to have Deputy Frank Navarro come up and give a presentation on the Every 15 Minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor McInnes, Honorable members of the council, and Grand Terrace City Manager Duffy. My name is Deputy Frank Navarro, and since my father's name was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Robles, I'll add junior to that title as well. Currently, the School Resource Officer, son of Grand Terrace High School. And with me tonight is Assistant Principal Eric McDonald, Grand Terrace High School, and Colton Joe Unified School District Security Manager John Sacks. You may not be aware, but every 15 minutes, somebody dies from an alcohol-related collision. Every 15 minutes is a program designed to bring together a broad coalition of interested local agencies, along with other entities, with the goal of reducing alcohol-related incidents among our youth. The San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, in conjunction with the California Highway Patrol and the Traffic Office of Traffic Safety, also known as OTS, have teamed up with Grand Terrace High School to present this program. The two-day event will focus on the reality and the consequences of underage drinking, the responsibility of making mature decisions, and the impact that decisions have on family, friends, and many others. It includes the enactment of a DUI collision, driving under the influence, on day one, and a mock funeral service for those students killed in the collision on day two. And at this time, we will show you a few snippets from our 2015 event, followed by some additional information.
Check this one. She's got a faint pulse.
Check her pulses down there. I got a pulse on this side. Got a pulse. The GCS is three. All right, let's start. Does she have a, um, does she have a pulse? I got nothing up here. Start chest confessions. Get that D. Roddy, the sense of it.
Why don't you start bleeding? Effie, one minute, guys. IV push.
She got big laceration here.
So as you can see, just by the few minutes of the video, very impactful program. And again, the goal is to ensure the safety of our kids and our youth within our community. Our budget for that year ran about fourteen thousand, and we're very gracious and very fortunate enough to have multiple entities that assisted with us in putting on that presentation. Funding for this event is going to come by way of a reimbursable grant that is provided through the Office of Traffic Safety and is managed by California Highway Patrol. In 2015, the city of Grand Terrace was gracious enough to accept the grant for the event, and then was reimbursed in full shortly after the conclusion of the event, which was ten thousand dollars for the 2015 event. We are once again reaching out to the city for their assistance in agreeing to accept the grant for this year's event, which has been cut to six thousand dollars for 2017.
Mayor, City Council, Cynthia Fortune Finance Department, as Deputy Navarro had explained, two years ago, the grant was for ten thousand dollars, and this year, the California Highway Patrol only gave us a six thousand dollar award. So in order to help the Sheriff's Department complete and do the same video as they have for the high school, staff is requesting that City Council, in addition to receiving the grant, is to authorize an allocation of four thousand dollars to augment the Every Fifteen Minutes grant. We're going to take this out of the Public Safety Fund that we had originally set aside for public safety services. This amount has already been budgeted, so it is under the authorization of the city manager, but we are asking City Council to allocate four thousand for this grant. That ends our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, no questions. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. And if you would, please state your name for the record.
My name is Deborah Hurst, two-two-nine-five-zero, Orangewood Court. This is a great program. I encourage the city to do the four thousand dollars. I acted as coroner for several Every Fifteen Minutes when I was volunteering there, and it really impacts the kids more than, it impacts the nerds, it impacts the jocks, the populares, it impacts them all. So I really encourage the city to extend the four thousand dollars for this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Thank you so much. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, so seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion.
Make a recommendation to one, accept the 2017 Every Fifteen Minutes Grant Program Award of six thousand from the Department of California Highway Patrol. Two, authorize the city manager or his designee to sign and execute the grant agreement with the Department of Highway, California Highway Patrol. Three, authorize allocation four thousand to augment the Every Fifteen Minutes grant from the State Department, from the Department of California Highway Patrol. And four, authorize the revenue and expense allocations of ten thousand respectively to account for the receipt of grant funds and expenditure for the Every Fifteen Minutes program.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Reinhars, Hussey, Wilson voted aye. Mayor Protim Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabb voted aye.
All right, thank you. We look forward to another good program here at Grand Terrace High School.
Thank you very much. And just on a side note, tomorrow, we're going to be holding a mock critical incident exercise at Grand Terrace High School to kind of show what's implemented right now in the event of a lockdown situation involving law enforcement response. So you're all invited. Go time is at eight forty in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight, which is the purchase of automated license plate reader cameras for the corner of Barton Road and Honey Hill.
I apologize, everybody, we're back to back. This staff report supports two city council goals, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations, and maintaining public safety through the purchase of additional public safety devices to assist our public safety personnel in providing additional protection for our community. Back on June twenty-eighth, when City Council approved the sixteen-seventeen operating budget, that included an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from the Traffic Safety Fund for the purchase of automated license plate reader cameras, or ALPRs. The Traffic Safety Fund is a special revenue fund whose resources may be used for traffic control devices such as these. The purchase of ALPRs is within the restricted use of these funds. During the course of the year, City Council was also provided with a presentation of the Public Safety Services provided by the Sheriff's Department. So for those who are not familiar with automated license plate reader cameras, as it's shown, it's OCR technology that actually automatically leads license plates on cars that pass by. And I'm going to have the lieutenant actually explain more on this as far as the location of the cameras.
Good evening, again Doug Wolf, Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office in charge of Grand Terrace. We've, at this first phase of the installation of these cameras, we're doing two cameras, and they'll be facing eastbound on Barton Road at Honey Hills. We've chosen these, this intersection because it is a main thoroughfare in and out of the city. And we've chosen the outbound lanes because it does help investigators in the event that they get a call where maybe a burglary occurred, they have an approximate time that that burglary occurred, then they can go to these cameras and see if that vehicle left the location by capturing that license plate. So it kind of helped the investigators as opposed to trying to capture vehicles coming into the city, and you don't know how much rolling surveillance they do before they find a target to burglarize or whatever they're trying to accomplish. So again, it's proven that the outbound lanes help investigators. But ideally, when we're all said and done, we're hoping to get both inbound, outbound at this intersection, as well as Barton and Michigan, and as well as Main and Michigan. So we'll capture all the major thoroughfares into the city.
Any questions of staff at this time? Did you have more report?
Yes, ma'am. To continue, to continue, we are requesting that City Council award a purchase order to Vigilant Solutions. As stated in the staff report, Vigilant is the vendor that Sheriff's Department has chosen for all their ARPR installation and monitoring. I believe part of the staff report includes a memo stating that. Staff report has stated that the Sheriff's Department did extensive research before settling on this particular vendor. So now this vendor is one that they use to install all the cameras within their authority. They also handle the network and, and the data. And I think that that actually concludes my report. In addition to this, so the cost of thirty thousand and changes for the whole system and two replay cameras, the annual costs of four hundred and eighty thousand will start in the fourth year, so the first three years of annual maintenance costs are covered. So the first three years will only be an annual cost of five hundred thousand, that's for the Verizon service data.
Excuse me, Ms. Fortune, you're saying four hundred and eighty dollars and five hundred dollars, not, you're saying five hundred thousand and forty and eighty thousand, you said?
No, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Right. Just.
That's a better figure. We had four hundred and eighty thousand and then five hundred thousand. So no, I like, I like the, I like, you just wanted to see if we were listening.
Well, I said.
All right, so four hundred, four hundred and eighty dollars by year four?
For the first three years, and that will go up, by year four, that will go up to fourteen eighty for both cameras. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Okay. Are there any questions on the purchase order or the LPR cameras at this time? No? Okay, is, are there any requests to speak?
Ma'am.
And I see a member of the public who would like to speak on this item. Please come to the lectern, and if you would, state your name for the record.
Jeffrey McConnell, Wall Street Avenue. For some of you, you know, I've been promoting this technology for well more than three years, having many conversations with Mr. Captain's, then Captain Steve Dorsey, who also helped promote this. Some of the thieves use technology, so I say fight fire with fire. It's, this is a technical times, we need to work smarter, not harder. The cost of a deputy for an eight-hour shift for one year is somewhere around two hundred seventy thousand dollars. For these thirty thousand dollars, they're good for, as Mr. Wolf just said, at least ten years or more. We could buy a whole lot of cameras for that much money for ten years. And we only really have about, in and out of the city, we have about, at least about a dozen entrances, which in this case would take at least four cameras. But about a dozen entrances in and out of the city, so if we invest enough to completely do a cyber fence around the city, I'm sure the crime would go down. The investment is well worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion and any further deliberation.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to approve a purchase installation of two automatic license plate readers, ALPR cameras, in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars to be installed at the intersection of Barton Road and Honey Hills Drive, and authorize the city manager, as does the need to execute the purchase order to Vigilant Solutions for the ALPR, excuse me, cameras in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second motion?
All right, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Reinhars, Hussey, Wilson voted aye. Mayor Protim Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabb voted aye.
Thank you. Item nine is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Sandra Molina, the Planning and Development Services Director. So this item is compliant with our 2030 vision program to maintain public safety. Every year, the county San Bernardino Office of Emergency Services informs cities within the county of the Emergency Performance Grant Funds that are allocated every year to the county's operational area, and each of its twenty-four member cities are allocated ten thousand dollars plus an additional source, additional funds based on per capita. And so the city was eligible for eleven thousand and six hundred and thirty-two dollars. The funds, the purpose of the funds are for supporting comprehensive emergency management at the local level to encourage improvement in mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery capability for all hazards. The grant is a matching grant, and the city indicated that we would match through cash in-kind staff services. We also saw this as a way to fund consultant services to assist in the preparation of the city's local hazard mitigation plan. The local hazard mitigation plan is required to be updated every five years, and so the county, countywide, is implementing their plan, and the city is also doing so likewise. These grant funds must be expended by 2017, May 31st, 2017. Because of the short window to, to meet the grant timeline, the city entered into a contract with planning, Dynamic Planning and Science Services to prepare the hazard mitigation plan. DPS can meet the grant schedule. Staff is requesting this evening that the Council take several actions to accept the grant, establish the fund for the Emergency Performance Grant Fund account, authorize the in-kind match, award the purchase order in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, approve revenue and expense appropriations, and authorize the city manager to execute any amendment to cover the scope of the work. With that, I would conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no takers, are there any requests from the public?
Ma'am.
All right, does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion.
All right, a motion for approval.
Of all a staff recommendation?
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it, and the clerk will read everything.
All right, there's a motion and second.
Receive and file the San Bernardino County Fire, SB Fire Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG report. Accept the EMPG award in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two. Establish fund number seventy-five as an Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG fund. Authorize the in-kind match of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two from the city's approved fiscal year 2016-17 operating budget as required by the EMPG grant. Approve the revenue and expense appropriations in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-four respectively for the EMPG grant activity. Award a purchase order to Dynamic Planning Plus Science, DP Plus S, to update the city's local hazard mitigation plan in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two. Authorize the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to the attached agreement with DP Plus S to incorporate the additional scope of work and the additional compensation to cover the scope of work in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Reinhars, Hussey, Wilson voted aye. Mayor Protim Robles voted aye. Mayor Protemroles voted aye. Mayor McNabob voted aye.
All right, thank you. Item number 10 is the 10th Annual Blue Mountain Hike.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Again, my name is Sandra Molina. This item here promotes goal number four, to implement successful partnerships. So this is really coming council as an informational item. The Blue Mountain, the Friends of Blue Mountain have their annual hike or walk, the Blue Mountain, every year. This year, it's the 10th anniversary. It'll be held on Sunday, March 3, at 8:00 a.m. It's sponsored by the Friends of Blue Mountain, Sierra Club, Azure Hills Church, Foundation of Grand Terrace, and the City of Grand Terrace. So city staff met with the Friends of Blue Mountain to discuss this year's event. And because it is a 10th anniversary of the walk, the city wanted to increase its participation and sponsorship by sponsoring a food fair with entertainment at Azure Hills Church at the parking lot. And the church has given the city its approval to use the parking lot. The city staff is wanting to do this to give participants a place to go after the walk to grab lunch and enjoy some entertainment. And also because it's a 10th anniversary, we wanted to make it a bigger event than previous years. Also during our discussion, we did have a discussion regarding the fundraising activities that have been happening to date by the Friends. And as the councils may recall, we did submit a grant application to, for the Blue Mountain Park and Trail, and that was submitted. We haven't received any information yet with respect to the status of that grant, but we're hopeful that we'll be successful. And if that's the case, then we've talked to the Friends to take the funds that they've raised so far and make it an endowment for maintenance purposes. And so that's something that they indicated that they would pursue. But again, the goal of this and the intent of this presentation was just to give the council this information about the 10th anniversary and that we do want it to make it a bigger event this year. And then again, it's on Sunday, March 3. With that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Sunday, March 5?
Yes, sorry about that.
When do we expect to hear about the grant?
In April.
In April, okay. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Good job.
Can I just stand by the food truck? I think I'm still recovering from last night.
You want to actually serve food like you served coffee at the...
And this is a receive and file, Mayor. There's no action needed.
All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, receive and file. Madam City, or Mr. City Attorney, did you want to vote on that, or can we just?
It's not this.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 11, which is the Award of Contract for Pico Street Paving Services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and residents of Grand Terrace in attendance tonight. This item before you is the Award of Contract for Pico Street Paving Services. Just to be specific, it's a section of Pico Street, not the entire street. This is, this item supports and promotes the goal number two, maintain public safety by investing in critical improvements to public infrastructure. And for the record, Amini Dimitri, Public Works Director. This work, this proposed work to pave a section of Pico Street is in connection with a 12-lot subdivision on Pico Street at Pascal Avenue. The project was approved roughly a year ago in March 2016 by the City Council. The subdivision, which is tract 18793, required typical excavation for new utilities, like most new developments do. So as a condition for approval, as a condition of approval for the development, Agus Pico Housing LP, which is a developer in this case, was required to pave the half of the street along the frontage of the new tract, as all excavation work is now complete for the utilities. So we saw an opportunity, city staff saw an opportunity to partner with the developer to pave the other half. So they were required to pave from the gutter lip out to the center line, and we decided to pave the rest of the street because Pico Street, along the frontage of this new development, has a PCI or Pavement Condition Index of 33, which is fairly poor. So we saw an opportunity to pave the entire street, and we engaged in a conversation with the developer and his contractor, and we decided to have a contract agreement directly with his contractor so that once the work is done, they would bill us directly for it. And my recommendation tonight was to waive the competitive bidding process, considering these unique circumstances, that we wanted to do the work at the same time by the same contractor to take advantage of the cost-saving that comes with one mobilization, doing the work at the same time to minimize inconvenience to the residents versus having it done two weeks apart or three weeks apart. So that was going to be our recommendation tonight, to award the contract to United Paving Company for the street improvements of the other half of Pico Street, parallel to the frontage of tract 18793, in an amount not to exceed $23,492, and that includes the 5% contingency, as well as authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any necessary change orders during the course of construction within the allocated budget. However, I found out earlier this week from Mr. Moore, the developer, that the work actually took place last week. The contractor or the developer did not wait until we come to the council and present the item and seek your approval. The work has already been completed, and I just found out, again, just a few minutes ago from Mr. Moore, that United Paving was not the contractor they used. They decided to go with a different contractor. I'm not sure who the different contractor is.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Wilson?
I have some questions. Thank you. How close are we to see of those on the project?
Actually, four units have already been completely constructed, and actually, the people, the folks, the tenants, already moved in. So the certificates of occupancy have already been issued.
Good enough, good enough, thank you. Then the question is, was the full improvement of the street shown on the plan as a requirement or a condition of the project?
No, sir, they were not shown on the plan.
Just a half street to the center line?
Yes.
I guess my third question is, would the developer had to pave all of the street to make the center line profile by any chance?
It would be very tricky to pave just one half of the street, but it is doable.
My last question is, did they get inspection before the paving was done?
No, no inspections were...
We have a problem.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, Madam Council, if I could just inject here. Because this model, essentially, the recommendation has changed slightly since the conditions have changed. Since the developer essentially initiated the work we were going to be paying for, I just wanted to bring to your attention that if this council wants to move forward with paying the contractor, that the approval of the payment would be subject to an inspection.
Any other questions to staff? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and Mayor, in light of the new information that we have received that the contractor that we anticipated to provide the work is not going to provide the work. So staff would need some direction tonight. Basically, council has a couple options. After consulting with the city attorney's office, case law is clearly on the city's side, that the city's not obligated for any work at all. However, because we have a relationship with the developer, and he's provided an investment of about $3, $4 million in the process, if the council so deems that they want to move forward, subject to the road being inspected, there isn't anything to stop the council from actually doing that. However, we would still have to bring this item back to, award it to the contractor that actually did the work. And so the direction that we would need from the council today is either to bring this item back, or Mr. City Attorney table it or take no action. It's really up to the council to make one of those decisions.
Okay, council. What's your perspective on this item?
Well, I think obviously we need the agenda to call out the inspection, and the actual person's going to be in receipt of the money, so it can just come back.
Okay. So you're saying that you'd like it to come back?
Yes.
Instead of just saying, "Thank you very much."
Well, "Thank you very much for the $23,000 worth of work." Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments on this item?
I'll make a second on what you said, because, you know, we, we have a developer, he's investing in our city, but I'm not going to have a hold against it, but, you know, they know better, they have to do the proper protocol, so I think we bring it back to the city and move forward on that.
Councilmember Wilson?
I would agree. I think we should hear it from the applicant as well, because it'll probably help our decision, but I think it should be brought back. I think we should, though, at least have the caveat that any research or inspection or testing that needs to be conducted to verify that the paving was done correctly, which would have happened had we had an inspection prior to it, is going to be at the cost of the contract. There's no reason why the pavement company should have done work without inspection. So that's something that Mr. Moore's going to have to address, but I think it bears coming back to us.
And he would like an opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Moore?
I just want to say, and I can put together in detail, but as people living in this town know, Pico is a very problem street for water, and anybody that's been going by our project would know that we have just been fighting water constantly down there and trying to get the project together. And we had a little window of sunshine, and we just squirted in and did it, and I know we probably should have done it, but we had a couple people move in, the street was torn up, it was just a nightmare. We had a chance where it dried out enough to do it, so we did it. And we did the job properly. If somebody wants to come out and inspect it, and we'll pay for it, whatever it takes, but we followed the plans. And the street is in great shape right now. It was a nightmare before, but we just did what we could do. And we have, our project, we have just done it and redone it because of this water, and we've had to, if you've driven down there, we've had to put special dikes in to hold the water off to be able to get the cross gutter in. It's just been very, very difficult, but we, you know, we toughed it out, and we've done it. So I would hope the council would consider that, and we just did the best we could down there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
All right. Did you have a comment you'd like to make? Okay.
I was just going to say, I mean, I do know that there has to be certain temperature. There's a lot of issues that are not normal right now. I know that street was a problem. I saw on social media a lot of concerns about the lake region, we've all been experiencing the storm. So, I am a stickler. I work for the county where, lo and behold, we haven't let out a contract, and entire buildings are being demolished. And so that didn't go over very well, you know, where, but I think in this case, you outlined some conditions that needed to be mitigated in a timely way, and you did have people moving in, so there's some safety concerns. But, you know, we'll bring it back, and we'll protect the city as far as the inspection and the fees associated.
Mr. City Attorney, are you okay with direction to staff, or would you like a formal vote on this?
I would recommend a vote. It sounds like the council's considering tabling matter, bringing it back to allow staff time to inspect and approve or make adjustments. But I would recommend a vote, yes.
So Mayor Protem, I think you made a motion earlier?
Yes.
Would you like to restate your...
Yes, I'd make a motion to, what would be the right term, to defer this into another meeting, to allow for staff to identify who the contractor would be, and for inspection fees and to iron out who would pay for the fees.
Clear. And is there a second?
I second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes by five. Council members, Reiners, Hussey, Wilson voted aye. Mayor Protemroles voted aye. Mayor McNabob voted aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Moore, and thank you for paving the street. Item number 12, accept the Award of Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant for safety improvements on Mount Vernon in the amount of $435,700.
Madam Mayor, council members, residents of Grand Terrace, Amini Dimitri, Public Works Director, this item before you at the moment is to accept the Award of the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant for safety improvements on Mount Vernon in the amount This opportunity is a federal grant, and as everyone's well aware, we pursue every possible opportunity to bring more grant funding to Grand Terrace so we can undertake more and more public works projects. This staff report supports City Council Goal Number One, which is ensuring our fiscal viability, as well as Goal Number Two, to maintain public safety. The Highway Safety Improvement Program, codified as Section 148 of Title 23 of the Code of Federal Regulations, is one of the core federal aid programs. They refer to it as FAST, for short. It stands for Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act. In August 2015, city staff retained a consultant, Evan Brooks, and associates to prepare the grant application on behalf of the city for the proposed roadway safety improvements on Mount Vernon. Those improvements include the following: installation of radar feedback signs, improvements to roadways and crosswalk pavement markings and striping, installation of new street lights at locations where visibility needs to be enhanced, and installation of flashing stop signs and beacons. The estimated cost for these improvements, as we mentioned earlier, is $435,700, and city staff received notice from the consultant recently that the entire amount has been approved, and therefore, we are in the process of putting together the plans and specs for this proposed work. We plan to advertise in April and be done with construction phase later on this year. I have prepared a very simple PowerPoint presentation just to share with you tonight. So on my first slide, I'm showing what they call a hate map, and they refer to it by this name because it shows you the hot spots of where there's a higher than normal or higher than average rate of collisions and accidents out there. This data is obtained from, it's also referred to as SWITERS. This is actually the technical name for it. The hate map is just the common name for it, but SWITERS is a technical name for it. And I found out from Lieutenant Wolf earlier today, it stands for Statewide Integrated Traffic Records System. That's what SWITERS stands for. So as you can clearly see, we have five intersections along Mount Vernon, starting at the northern city limit with the city of Colton, and coming all the way down south. Here's one, two, three, four, five locations with slightly higher than average accident rates. And on the second sheet... um, accident rates, and on the second sheet is the, uh, heat map legend where they show you, uh, what each color corresponds to, so for example, red would be a head-on collision, um, I can't make out that color from all the way here, looks like, uh, orange or something like that, that would be, uh, side swipe, um, the green is rear end, and so on and so forth, but typically, the darker the color, um, the, the more severe the accident is, and then when you go back to the, uh, heat map, the darker the color also means the, the more accidents you have at this particular location. So, on my next slide, I'm showing those five, um, locations again, um, this slide is a lot, a lot better than the very first one, so you can actually see the street names, so that way we know exactly where the work will take place, the northern city limit, Mount Vernon at Barton, Mount Vernon at DeBarry, Mount Vernon at Van Buren, and, uh, Mount Vernon at Pico Street. So, on my next slides, I'm showing the exact improvements to each intersection that we're proposing at each and every one of those five, uh, intersections. The first one is Mount Vernon at, uh, Pico Street, we're starting from the south going north, um, there is, there will be high visibility, crosswalks, uh, crosswalk striping, as well as higher than average or higher than normal stop signs at all four, uh, approaches, here's one, two, three, four, at all four approaches, or, or four legs to the intersection. Uh, the next one is, uh, Mount Vernon at Van Buren, uh, very similar to the one before, high visibility, a crosswalk, some people refer to it as zebra striping, as well as, um, four, um, oversized stop signs, uh, but in this particular case, at this intersection, we're adding those flashing stop, stop ahead, uh, signs. Uh, the next one is DeBarry, it gets the high visibility, uh, striping, but no, uh, flashing beacons. The next intersection is, uh, Mount Vernon at Canal Street, this particular intersection will get the high visibility, uh, striping, as well as the two, uh, flashing signs, uh, one in the northbound and one in the southbound, to alert traffic that there is a stop ahead, and typically, uh, those flashing beacons are placed at locations that have a crest in the roadway, which is a vertical curve in the roadway, so when a driver is coming up the hill from Colton, they can't see very well, they don't know that there's a stop ahead, that's the reason why we put this flashing beacon, um, at a reasonable distance from which they can slow down, um, peacefully and, and, um, and come to a, a stop, uh, a stop safely. And the next intersection is Mount Vernon at Barton, this intersection will get, once again, uh, the high visibility, as they all do, um, and that's, that's about it. Um, and this concludes my, uh, presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
At Barton Road and Mount Vernon, we have the faux cobblestones?
Yes.
Will those be taken out?
No, they won't be taken out.
They'll just be striped over?
The idea is to stripe right over them.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time?
Well, it just strikes me as quite expensive for crosswalks and signs, um, I do see you're talking about installation of streetlights at locations where visibility needs to be enhanced?
Yes, this hasn't been determined yet, so this is one feature that we, that will require further research and design, so during the design phase, we will go out there, try to determine which, uh, locations could benefit from, uh, more streetlights, or if there aren't, none, we'll install new ones.
And that, we won't be getting any signals out of this?
No, no traffic signals proposed at this time, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hussey?
Well, Mayor Pro Tem just mentioned the traffic signals, I, I mean, if you're walking across Pico, Mount Vernon, and DeBarry, Mount Vernon, it's, uh, it's like playing that game Frogger, you're on your own, and you got a stop sign there and flash it all you want, but, um, if you look, and we're getting all that development out there in, uh, High Grove, that they put two new, uh, traffic lights up there, and being that Mount Vernon's gonna be our truck route and our business route, I think it would just be advised to put the traffic signals there, because we're not gonna have extra traffic or congestion, and the four-way stop, you know, people sometimes will, most of the time they blow through, but even if they all stop four ways, you're gonna have congestion, so then they get, start getting upset, I think traffic signals are the way to go, I would like to see, you know, what the cost would add it to those streets, um, especially for the public safety, too, and, and even one on, uh, I don't know, if, 'cause I think we just got a stop sign on Mount Vernon in Maine, and that's where our high school's at, so actually, we need like three traffic signals if we're gonna go all the way through it, that's our truck route, I'd just like to see somehow that implemented in here, instead of, you know, the stop signs are good, the flashers, that's a, a step, but I see it personally, and myself, walking and seeing them just blow through it, and people are, you know, especially when they get out of high school, they don't care, and people wanna get in, you know, in the middle of the lane, so I just think that'd be a good positive step to go on, too.
Uh, Mr. Hussey, two things to mention regarding traffic signals, number one, the typical cost is $250,000 for a typical intersection, so that would eat up, um, more than half or two-thirds of the, the amount we're getting from the grant. Secondly, there has to be a justification, uh, in traffic engineering terminology, we call it warrant, there are eight warrants we have to investigate, and if we meet one or more of those eight warrants, then the traffic signal is justified, otherwise, it is not justified, and it would be actually a problem down the line to install a traffic signal at an intersection where it's not warranted, cities could actually get sued for that.
Yeah, so, I also wanted to interject...
City Manager.
If I can, Mayor, so, I brought back the heat map to show you, uh, it's called, Yanni was talk, talking about, is that you have to have justification for particular traffic types in order to, or to put those traffic signals in, but as, uh, the council said earlier, what we can do is we can do some modeling, so with all the development going on in, um, High Grove, uh, we can do some modeling, what is it gonna look like in 2020? We also have mitigation funds for traffic mitigation on Mount Vernon, so, as Yanni indicated, that we, we have this $400,000, you know, we also have a couple hundred thousand dollars for mitigation for Spring Valley Ranch, and specifically for traffic control on, on Mount Vernon, so as we move forward, we'll do some modeling and trying to determine, by the time we get ready to actually put the project through it and design, we'll do the modeling, 'cause if it turns out that in five years from now, it's warranted to do a traffic signal there, there's no reason for us not to go ahead and incorporate that and do the traffic signal early, and so, so we'll do that, we'll, we'll do those modeling, and we'll do that through the engineers more, to, to be able to come back and look at that. So, this grant is for $435,000, or whatever that number is.
Correct.
And so what we'll also do is look at our other proceeds to see if it's warranted, and when would it be warranted, and we can just, we're working, making, making sure that, uh, we know that traffic's gonna be coming in from the new, from the new development, uh, we also know that, uh, um, Barton Road is expected to have, uh, 40,000 cars by a certain period of time, already, uh, the intersection on Barton and Mount Vernon is 28,000, that's actually more cars at that intersection than is coming off of the freeway, uh, so certainly, this is a great step, and based on the data just for that particular traffic coming in there, it warrants today that what we're doing now, but when we do the modeling, if it turns out that we're a year away, we can also make that, make that adjustment moving forward, so these are very good comments for us to, to, uh, look at, this is a good starting point, and then we'll incorporate the additional data to determine when, when and if the, the, the signals are made, so you can see there with that, I think those, those red dots there, there are already traffic signals there because of the history that, that has occurred, and so, these intersections are showing that there's gonna be, there's some additional information that, that we need to model in, so I, I think we're in the right direction.
Mr. Dimitri, can you talk about the radar feedback signs, I think I missed that part in your presentation.
Yeah, once again, this will be part of the design phase to determine what will be the ultimate locations to place, uh, those radar feedback signs, basically, they clock drivers, uh, approaching a particular intersection, and they start flashing the, there's the speed that they are driving at to alert them to, to slow down.
Okay, about how many of those do you think there'll be?
I would say at least two, at least two.
Okay. Do you have questions? No, okay, Councilmember Reiner's.
Can these funds be used for additional stop signs?
We can always go back to, uh, whoever's giving us the, the grant, and, uh, let them know that we're planning to do something slightly different, if they approve it, um, then we can look into it, but once again, stop signs, as well as traffic signals, they're all considered, um, traffic control devices, nobody can install a traffic control device on a public roadway unless there's a justification for it, uh, so for, for example, when it comes to stop signs, we look at the traffic volumes on the predominant movement street, and then the minor street, and you go in the, uh, man, MUTCD, manual, you know, from traffic control devices, it gives you charts, and you plot those numbers on the charts, and if you, and if it falls in a certain quadrant of the chart, then that tells you it's, it's justified, so you have to meet certain criteria to be able to install stop signs.
Mr. City Manager?
Based upon my conversations earlier with council, with Reiner's, are you referencing, uh, stop signs other locations, or stops, additional stop signs on, on Mount Vernon?
DeBarry.
So, yeah, so, Mr. Dimitri, I think what his, his question is, can this grant, which is for Mount Vernon, can it be used on other streets and put additional stop signs?
Yes, as I indicated, Mr. Reiner's, in the past, I have contacted Caltrans or whoever's giving, giving us the money, and, and I asked them, can we make a small change to the scope of work, most of the time, they say yes, but we, I wouldn't recommend doing anything different from the proposed scope without getting their, uh, approval first, or they won't give us the money.
And this question about, and your, your question about DeBarry, we can certainly do that, we would do...
With our own...
...warrants with our own funds.
Yes. Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to put that on somebody's radar, because if you're coming from chills on Mount Vernon, and you hang that left on DeBarry at the school, there is not a single stop sign on that entire street, you're free to go till you hit the mountain.
That's nice.
So, it was just something I wanted to bring up, and I meant to bring it up in public comment, and I forgot. Thank you.
Yes, duly noted.
Any other questions at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
I think, I think our Public Works, uh, Department is absolutely correct, the bottom line is, is that we are legally, as a city, obligated to warrant any kinds of changes to our traffic circulation, and if I'm correct, I believe that this, this, uh, circulation aspect was covered in the last general plan, uh, circulation element, and I think it goes out to 2030 or 2040, one of the two, and it considered the traffic that was going to be coming from the new development, what used to be known as Mountain Summer River, uh, so, uh, you know, we have to be careful when we start to talk about, you know, stop signs in various locations until we've covered ourselves with warrants.
Okay. There any requests to speak on this item?
None.
Anyone in the chambers that would like to speak? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Over the item, receiving file for the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant award report, accepted. Highway Safety Improvement Grant Award, amount of $435,700. Three, established fund number 74 is the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Fund. Four, approved the revenue and expense appropriations in the amount of $435,700, respectively, for a Highway Safety Improvement Grant Fund.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'd like to second the motion.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes, council member Reiner, Hussey, Wilson voted aye, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye, Mayor McNabbel voted aye.
Thank you, and item 13, discussion of public safety, levels of service, special city council meeting date. Has your name on it, Madam City Clerk? Were you hoping the city manager wanted to discuss this one?
Well, I, I was just kinda teasing with her, 'cause her name is on the report, uh, she was kind enough to write it while I was at the Lake of California Cities Meeting, so, um, so, there are several requests by council members, uh, uh, here at the council, and also offline to me regarding public safety and the city's need for potentially additional officer, what should that cost be? So, one of the things I thought that we should, we wanna do is basically bring the item back to the council in form of a workshop, uh, to either, to talk about, uh, what are, what are cities our size, what are the standard levels of service, trying to look at our historical data over the last 15 years, look at the crime rate, look at the types of crimes, look at, uh, ways, and also look at the cost, but also come up with some sort of, uh, financial mechanism to, uh, address how we pay for any additional requests that we have, and our councilman, uh, uh, Councilman Hussey had asked me directly for the actual dollar amount, uh, and wanted me to bring that back to the council, so, uh, we would be putting together all that information, if we can establish a date, uh, in, uh, February, either on February the 7th or February the 21st, and we would also, uh, do a, um, media campaign to alert residents either to watch or to attend the meeting, to help us, uh, look at not only, uh, levels of service, but also to get some tips and pointers from our shares department on how we can make ourselves a safer community through self-policing.
Okay. Are we having a special meeting on January 31st?
Yes, we are scheduled to have a, uh, ELC meeting on January 31st.
Okay. What would the council like to do? Would you like to meet on the 7th or the 21st, or an alternate date?
And, and Mayor, if I might, I'm sorry, if it's something that the council does not want to have a special meeting in February, we can certainly reduce the agenda on one of the regular scheduled meetings, but let you know that it would be a very live agenda, because we wanna focus on the time on this particular item, so we're certainly open to do that, too, if that's, if it's council's desire.
I frankly would prefer that. Any other perspectives on this?
I agree with, uh, uh, Pro Tem, uh, Robles, I think it'd be appropriate to try to combine it with a lightweight meeting.
Okay.
I agree also, let's just make a short agenda and put this, so the public can come there aware that we always have the second and fourth Tuesday. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah, I agree with Mr., uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Robles and Doug Wilson, that way you have, uh, more of a staff presence, and, not staff presence, but more of a public presence, so they know our regular agenda meetings, and this will really help out.
What they said, I agree.
All right, I think you have your direction. All right, thank you. And so then our next item is city manager communication.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council, uh, and actually, I'll, I'll say now, for the record, my name is Gee Hill Duffy, the city manager, I missed that earlier, I have just a few slides before we go into closed session, um, just a quick note, that, as, Sandra Malina mentioned earlier, Community Development Director, we have our 10th Annual Blue Mountain Walk, so we'll start putting out, uh, these posters, uh, in all of our kiosks, and on the, in the beginning part, in the interest of the city, about the Blue Mountain Walk occurring on Sunday, March 5th at 8:00 AM, it's actually 8:00 AM is the start, I think you can show up as late as 11:00 to make it up and down the mountain, going up the mountain is a little bit more strenuous than going down the mountain, I guess gravity does actually work, uh, and, uh, also, when the posters go out, there will be a QR code on this area here that will give you, uh, more information on the activities that are gonna be occurring, uh, for the day at the Asher Hills Church, and, uh, what's the name of the band, we're in search of a, a country or Dixieland band to be a part of the, the festivities for the truck stop, uh, so we'll work that out, we'll keep, we'll keep the council informed. The next item is that we have a transit tour of Seminole County Transportation Future, date is Thursday, February the 2nd, at 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, um, the agenda actually starts at 2:45 PM, the check-in... The check-in at 3:00 p.m. tour begins. At the Omnitrans Seminole Transit Center, we are asking if the council would like to go. We'd like to carpool. And if you want to attend that, please check in with the city clerk, and she will let us know about the carpool situation. And...
That's the location.
That's the location. Okay. Locations will be, locations we'll be going to. Okay. Also, I'll follow up to Ms. Crystal Egger. She sent the council some flowers for, thank you, for the wonderful event that she called it. She has it posted all over her Facebook account, and read a few comments from the residents regarding her homecoming, and it was a very exciting event for her. And it really kind of puts us on the map in terms of, she had quite a, she had a lot of followers on her web, on her Facebook page. Also, we're going to be sending out an e-blast to all the residents of one of our, of our thousand followers, just to remind them that when they hire a contractor to do work, they should make sure that that contractor has a business license in the city, because those business licenses actually support our code enforcement. And so, in doing so, by, and normally what happens is that those businesses already factor in the cost of a business license into their overall cost. So, when they don't have a business license, and you don't request that they have one, they're actually cheating you on two accounts, in terms of helping provide service to the city, and also overcharging you for not having a business license. So, listen to messages out to always ask for, make sure that your company that's doing work for you in the city has a business license. With that, thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Before we recess to closed session, I imagine many of you will be leaving and will not be here when we finally close the meeting. So, I want to at least say right now that we will be adjourning our meeting in memory of longtime resident and Neighborhood Watch volunteer, Mr. Ray Burns, and our condolences to his family and to his friends. And we will be closing in his honor. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. If you weren't going to stay, thank you so much to those of you who were here tonight, and those of you that participated. At this time, we will be recessing to closed session. I should probably tell you what the item was. Our closed session item is conference with legal counsel in its anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 549, 56.9. And we have one potential case that we will be discussing. And we will be in recess. Ready? Mr. Videographer?
All right. The council met in closed session. We have no reportable items. We did give some direction to staff. We met regarding conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2, Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 549, 56.9. We will be closing, we will be adjourning our meeting tonight to honor the memory of longtime resident and Neighborhood Watch volunteer, Mr. Ray Burns. And my understanding is he is one of, he was one of the Neighborhood Watch volunteers that had the most hours over the last year. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 14th. We will all be here for Valentine's Day 2017 at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to City Clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you to my colleagues for your participation and discussion. Thank you for city staff. We are adjourned.